So this evening, once again, we are pleased to present to you an opportunity to meet with and speak to and ask questions of all the candidates for the second, sixth, and the six wards. So I'd like to introduce our candidates. We have in the second, Peter Biancomano and Bonnie Murray. I did speak with Timony Fisher, who is also running in the second, and unfortunately, she has a conflict this evening. She is a zoning board member and there's a zoning board meeting, and she is fulfilling her commitment to the zoning board by being at that meeting this evening. And then in the fifth ward, we have Eduardo Gonzalez and Peter Cunningham. And in the sixth, we have Jennifer Giotino and Carmella Garcia, who also has a conflict this evening, but has indicated to us that he will be joining us this evening. So for those of you who haven't had the pleasure of joining us before, the way we run the show is you've all been offered an opportunity to put together some questions on indexed cards. Those cards, those cards will be collected by our runners, so if you have a card that's filled, just raise your hand and someone will pick it up. And then Melissa Abbott and Abby and I, who are both members of the Hobaoken Coalition Coalition, make sure that there's no bias towards any particular candidate, that the -- there's no duplication. And we have a really good quality of questions already, so if you don't hear your specific question, please don't take it personally. We're trying to answer as many questions as we can this evening. So each candidate would be given an opportunity to have a one-minute open statement. Questions would be presented through a randomized program by our moderator, Bob Bowden, and each candidate will have an opportunity to speak for one and a half minute on the questions. There will be an opportunity for rebuttal where appropriate, and we're going to try to move as long to get as many questions thrown in a short period of time. Now, I want to again welcome our moderator back. He is our longtime lead moderator and Hoboken resident as well, and he's going to be asking the questions of the candidates this evening. He, by day, is the executive director of Choice Media, which is an education policy news service and Twitter feed that has a newsroom right here in Hoboken. The website is choicemedia.tv, and tweets can be followed at the handle @ChoiceMediaTV. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Bob to get the show rolling.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Please thank Mary for her involvement tonight, and so does Melissa Abbott and the Hobaoken Coalition. Can the candidates see my computer? As usual, I have now set up a random order thing. Each time I press the refresh on the sort, it gives a completely new order of speakers, and so each time there'll be a new question or whatever, I'll press this once, we'll all see a change, and I think you can all see what order you would be in answering, I hope. All right, so as Mary pointed out, we begin with 60-second opening statements, and we're just going to run all six randomly, by the way. We're not going to be focused on wards in the order of the question answers. So that said, we will begin with opening statements. I'm going to press refresh here, and we'll have 60-second opening statements. And I can see here Eduardo Gonzalez is first, and by tradition, we allow applause at the beginning and the end, so you guys are free to applaud if you'd like. And so, Mr. Gonzalez.
I'd like to say thank you for the quality of life for hosting this debate again. My name is Eduardo Gonzalez, and I'm running for Hoboken's fifth ward council seat. What I bring to the table is a diversity of experiences and a track record of getting the job done. I work for a large institution, a large financial institution, and at work, cooperation and compromise are the path to achieving our goals, not conflict. As board president of a charter school, cooperation and compromise is what allowed us to accomplish a multitude of achievements that we would not have been able to achieve if we chose conflict and litigation. My friends, neighbors, and residents of the fifth ward have been asking, they've actually been demanding, a new direction, a new leadership, one that is common sense and not confusing, leadership that gets the job done, not throws their hands up in despair, and leadership that works for you and not a select few. And I, Eduardo Gonzalez, am that councilman. Thank you.
Next opening statement, Peter Biancomano.
Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you. Thank you. I would also like to thank Mary Kelly and the Quality of Life Coalition for hosting this important forum. Mr. Bowden, it's great to see you now three years in a row at the helm. I am running for city council because I love my neighborhood. The second ward has always been my home. Many of my neighbors are like family. I feel as if it is my duty to serve my family, whether at the age of 18, being elected as a committee person in my ward, acting as a liaison between the city government and my neighbors, or in the past five years, serving the district students as a trustee of the Hoboken Board of Education. When I see my neighbors paying some of the highest taxes in our city, and parks such as Allegiant Park being maintained the way it is, and Legions Park not even being completed, I feel I need to step up to the plate and represent them as their city councilperson. Thank you so much.
Next opening statement from Bonnie Murray.
Thank you. My name is Bonnie Murray, and I am a candidate for the second ward. I want to thank the Quality of Life Coalition for providing this opportunity for me and for the residents of Hoboken. I think it's a great way for the residents to get to know the candidates in each ward. I also want to thank my family for their support through and through. My husband and I are raising our two children in Hoboken. My son, Jackson, is a sixth grader at the Hudson School, and my daughter, Melanie, a fourth grader at Wallace. As a resident without a seat on any board, I've already made positive changes in our second ward community, and now I want to do more as your council representative. I find Hoboken politics so divided, and people are always taking sides. I say it's not about sides, it's about solutions and getting things done. My sole aspiration is serving the people of the second ward as their council representative. I don't have a political agenda, nor am I seeking to build a long-term career in Hoboken politics. I'm focused on getting our roads paved, ensuring our open spaces uptown are well-maintained, our traffic and congestion issues, and I want to prioritize handling the future growth of our second ward. Thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight. Vote 1C on 11-3.
Mr. Garcia, you've come right in time for your opening statement, so please proceed.
Timing is everything. Thank you, Bob. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. I'm proud to be a father for children, a coach here in Hoboken, was the former school board president, former executive director of Hoboken Housing Authority, former director of Health and Services for the city of Hoboken, and today I currently serve as the assemblyman, as well as the executive vice president and chief of state office for the city of Newark in my professional capacity. It is an honor to be here this evening with all of you and to share pretty much my platform of why I'm running for sixth ward councilman. One of the reasons to lower taxes in my ward, many of my neighbors have problems with the fact that taxes continue to rise, yet there's no return on investment, and I was very proud to lead the charge on the rolling assessment issue after revow, which allowed the mayor and the city council to pull the plug on that issue. Furthermore, I've been very instrumental in many of the projects in Hoboken. From a quality of life perspective, I've built three parks as executive director of Hoboken Housing Authority, including redeveloping the Mama Johnson Field. Thank you.
Our next speaker, Peter Cunningham.
Thank you, Bob. Good evening. I am the fifth ward councilman, Peter Cunningham. Serving on city council has been a tremendous privilege, and the marked progress we've been able to make makes me confident about Hoboken's future. I want to continue to serve because I believe I can continue to make a strong, positive difference. I am proud of playing a major role in fixing our finances, securing more parks and open space, solving our flooding problem, and changing our approach to development to put the needs of the community first. We face crucial development decisions that will determine the shape of Hoboken's future, and we simply can't afford to go back to the days when we gave the developers a blank check. Particularly in the northwest, north Hoboken, my experience as chair of the council committee on development in the northwest part of Hoboken enables me to ensure careful stewardship of our development plans. Thanks for being here this evening, and I look forward to our discussions.
And final opening statement from Jen Giotino.
Hello. My name is Jen Giotino. It has been my privilege to represent the sixth ward, the best neighborhood in one of the best small cities over the past four years. I am running for reelection because while I am proud of all that we've accomplished, there's still much more to do. When I ran five years ago, I said one of my highest priorities was acquiring BASF property, and I am pleased to report that we are close. This will help with flooding, much-needed park space, as well as a municipal parking garage. Washington Street redesign is underway, and I want to continue to represent my ward and Hoboken in the process, and I want to make sure that Hoboken stays on a sound, long-term fiscal path. I am proud to have fought for Bloomfield to be repaved in its entirety, bringing Sinatra Field back online, and upgrading several parks, especially Church Square, but what I am most proud of is my ability to work alongside everyone and bring people together.
All right, let's begin with questions in the cars, and that's just the first card that appeared, and I'll just read it. I like how we sometimes start with -- we don't always start with the same questions each year, and we do this, so it's interesting. I'll hit the refresh button on my random number generator, and you guys can watch as it changes right there. Carmella Garcia will be the first speaker to respond to this question. Can you articulate why Jersey City's business and restaurant community is growing and thriving, and what would you do to make Hoboken pro-business?
Great question. First of all, is bringing the business owners to the table as stakeholders to have a conversation, listening to their ideas. One of the things that we should do is have an office of small business development, where we're providing the resources to business owners to market their businesses, understand what the inventory of all the businesses throughout the city of Hoboken that we have to offer. Not that when you walk down Washington Street, you have so many vacant storefronts, and the reason why Jersey City is so successful is because they have been promoting from a commercial -- from a commercial urban design, commercial planning standpoint, how many businesses are needed for a particular service, how many restaurants that they feel on that block should be welcoming, and what is desired is for that neighborhood. So that's what's been making Jersey City so -- and you have a leadership there that really promotes the office of small business, and that ensures that business owners have the right resources. For instance, the Washington redesign, you know what? That's going to create some problems for business owners, and they should be the ones that we're listening to in order to ensure that they can thrive in what services that they're running. How can we generate more business to them, but by the same token, make sure we have a diversified portfolio of businesses in the city of Hoboken?
Mr. Biancomano.
Being from a small -- a family that owns a small business in town, the largest issue that I hear amongst small businesses that keep revolving are three things. Number one, small businesses can't afford to rent in town, and it's either because the landlords have to increase their rent with the property reevaluation last year, or they just can't make ends meet. Parking is a big issue in town as well. People do not want to come to visit Hoboken because they know that the parking is an issue in town, and they're fearing that their $100 meal is going to turn into $150 meal with a parking ticket. And then I also believe that the Washington Street being in the disrepair that it's in right now is causing visitors not to come to town as well. Everybody has driven up and down Washington Street and felt those kidney-jarring potholes, and I do believe that we need to make that a priority to repave that road before we design it. Thank you so much.
Mr. Cunningham.
Yeah, actually, I think what we're trying to do, and have been trying to do for a long time now, is establish infrastructure for small business. Certainly, we need to provide the tools for small businesses to succeed. That would be from the local level to the state to the federal level. We've -- we actually had grant funding available for Washington Street, and I do agree with my colleagues here that paving Washington Street is critically important to their success. But wayfaring, there's a wayfaring that we're doing right now that's going to help not only the businesses succeed, but, you know, friends and family that come in and visit and actually help drive economic development in the city. They'll know where parking is, they'll know where certain types of shopping will be. And then there's the added development that will take place in the northwest part of Hoboken, where we're looking to diversify away from the residential ratable base to a commercial and retail ratable base to help reduce taxes, and the residents up there that are coming, in fact, they're already there in large part, will be able to use those businesses and thrive. So it's a win-win for the residents, it's a win-win for business. What we have, unfortunately, far too many times have seen is that bad politics gets in the way. We lost $250,000 in grant funding to actually repave Washington Street two years ago.
Okay, Ms. Murray on business.
Thank you. Our small businesses absolutely need our support, and I can assure you that when elected, I absolutely will support our small businesses. I do believe that Washington Street not being paved causes some of the issues with our small businesses on that street. I do believe that we need to incorporate our small businesses into our planning efforts for the Washington Development Street redesign, and we should have a small business committee that assists with that. And I think, you know, currently, the Washington Street redesign plan also has some thoughts on backing a little parking, which I think can cause some congestion issues within Washington Street, and we have to really think about that. But I am absolutely supportive of small businesses, and I think we need to come up with solutions for them to make their businesses thrive. Thank you.
Mr. Gonzalez.
When elected to the Hoboken City Council, I would definitely work with the small businesses. We can work with the small businesses through the Chamber of Commerce. We also have Stevens University down the street. They're a premier university in the country. We can try and promote some incubator space for all the students, the graduates that come out of the college. As well, again, small businesses are key also to Hoboken's diversity and Hoboken's cultural fabric. Actually, from Biancomano's Deli, Fiori's, when Maxwell was here, all those are small businesses that we would like to promote in town. And part of it is also cutting the red tape and cutting the bureaucracy for some of the small businesses to help cut some of their overhead.
Ms. Giotino.
The revow actually benefited most of the commercial properties on Washington Street by a reduction in taxes, so I don't think that's the issue. I do think rents, though, in general, on Washington Street are very high, and that's why many businesses can't make it. They don't have the upfront money to last through the first year. I do think that changes in zoning would benefit small businesses in town if it was easier for them to open in corner lots, especially in the neighborhoods. And I also am not sure that it's a fair question to ask Jersey City versus Hoboken when you're talking about one small part of Jersey City compared to all of Hoboken, because there are a lot of small businesses are opening just north of the Viaduct. In my neighborhood, within the past two years, Autostrada has opened, and Diamond Gymnastics, and they're both thriving. Thank you.
All right, next question. This is an oldie but a goodie. What reforms would you push for within the Hoboken Parking Authority? I'll hit refresh here as you guys think about what to do with the cars. And we have Mr. Garcia again first on this.
Thank you. Number one, I believe that we need to modernize the system in which the Hoboken Parking Authority operates, so for instance, and the courts in -- so for instance, there are many summonses that are issued sometimes that we say are discretionary summonses. Folks feel they're not guilty, they're red and yellow, they're confused with those lines, the signage is unclear. And so one of the things I'm proposing is that the residents should be given the opportunity with technology to be able to fight that ticket online and not have to miss the days of work in order to go fight that ticket in court, because unfortunately, that's why they do pay for it. So my suggestion is that we modernize and use technology to upload an affidavit with pictures, prove that you're not guilty, because we know that these discretionary summonses are issue, and therefore have an administrative judge dismiss them. That's on that aspect. Also, the municipal garages are half-empty. We need to do more to not only generate revenue for the city where you can fill those garages, but residents could have an opportunity to get it for $125 a month, whereas you know in the evening, on the weekends, they're half-filled. Get them out to the residents. So that's another opportunity. As well as line parking, where sometimes in the neighbors that I've been speaking with, they see it. You have one car take up two parking spots. So if you had line parking, that is a viable solution that would make it better and create more parking. So when I'm your councilman of the sixth ward, that's what I intend to do, fight for those reforms, whereas we can modernize certain systems as well as create parking solutions in that manner. Thank you.
Mr. Gonzalez.
For parking, even though the master plan wasn't codified, I think the master plan called for perimeter parking as one of the solutions to parking in town. One of the things that I would do also is, the Parking Authority right now generates around $4 million in surplus, and actually, my opponent, when he first ran back in 2007, is quoted as saying he would use that money to create parking solutions. But time and time again, we just keep using it to plug holes in the budget. I would take that surplus and make sure to use it for parking solutions. And then the final point would be municipal meters. I don't think we need to bond for municipal meters. I don't think we need to have municipal meters all over town, but definitely not bonding for something that generates revenues. Thank you.
Ms. Murray on parking.
Hoboken has a serious parking problem that I believe needs to be addressed. A lot of this, I believe, is due to overdevelopment. We're overpopulated as a town. Our Parking Authority needs to explore open spaces for new parking garages, and our developers, as they think about new designs of their new buildings, need to be concerned about this issue and ensure every resident has a parking spot. Our city should also work with these developers to ensure that we get certain givebacks, and maybe parking is a solution as one of those givebacks. I definitely think that, you know, we should continue things like our shuttle buses that we have to help alleviate some of our parking concerns. You know, I'd love to see maybe the New York Waterway ferry bus. We have one in Weehawken that goes from street to street. We could maybe look to help some people out with their commutes for more -- for those people that aren't as close to the ferry, providing the New York Waterway Bus Shuttle. I absolutely am not aligned to bonding the parking meters as well, because it is a revenue-generating source for Hoboken. Thank you.
Mr. Cunningham.
Parking, it's been a problem in Hoboken forever, and solving the problem is going to be a multifaceted solution. I do think that from a practical standpoint, I'm a little concerned with the ticketing that's been going on in the neighborhoods. I think we're a little too punitive on the residents, particularly in the inner brownstone neighborhoods, and I also agree with some of my colleagues here that some of the development that's occurred in the last 10 or 15 years, where we didn't tie the parking to the unit itself, has created a situation where it's cheaper to park on the street than to pay the $200, $300 in the parking garage. So we could do a better job at increasing the utilization of those lots. But we've always also been very supportive of perimeter parking, and we're having that happen with the BASF site. We're going to have a one-acre site, it's going to be a multi-hundred-spot garage, and that, we need to then incentivize people to park there and have the appropriate transportation, like the hop, to get people to and from those garages, particularly those that don't use their car on a frequent basis. That, I think, would do a lot. Now, we've also had circumstances where, you know, we've got 916 garage that's woefully underutilized, and we need capital financing to actually fix that garage. And oh, by the way, I am not supportive of meters in the neighborhoods, and we never bonded for those meters.
Mr. Biancomano.
I agree with Mr. Cunningham that parking is a huge issue here in Hoboken. It has been for several -- for many, many years going back. I do believe that modernizing the system is the right way to go forward in terms of creating more parking. I do think munimeeters are fine in commercial areas. I disagree with them in residential areas. And I also believe that the Parking Authority is having record surpluses, and the Parking Authority was actually created to assist residents in creating more parking, and I actually think it's just been a hidden tax. So we need to take that revenue from the Parking Authority. We need to find some city land to build parking garages for our residents and our visitors. Thank you.
Ms. Giotino.
BASF will provide perimeter parking. I am not 100% sold on perimeter parking working as an alternative for residents to park their car. There are talks, though, about -- we, right now, we have a valet system in town. It's at three locations, where if you come into town, it's mostly used by visitors. If you come into town, you can drop your car at the valet, they will then go park it in the garage, and then you can go back to them, and they'll bring it to you, about possibly doing something similar to that at BASF. I think that would be a huge benefit. We need to find ways to utilize our current municipal garages better. We've already begun to do things such as discounted evening parking, so if you're just coming in, if you're a commuter and you're parking only at night, you get a discounted rate. Making public transportation more accessible, we've added hop lines. If it's easier not to have a car, people are more likely to not have a car. And also, there have been a few things that the Parking Utility has been, or that the Parking Committee has been working on, such as changing the amount of time you can park on Washington Street, having shorter-term parking, possibly having shorter-term parking on the residential streets. I think all of that will help. Thank you.
Okay, next question. And I've been working on my random number generator, and I'll press it one more time, and there. Mr. Gonzalez will be first. As a city council person, what can you do to improve the quality of park maintenance and road maintenance? Mr. Gonzalez.
Well, park maintenance and road maintenance is something that should be budgeted for every year. It's nothing new. When we look at Washington Street and the fact that Washington Street is in disrepair, the useful life of Washington Street is probably five years. It's been over eight-plus years, and it hasn't been repaved. That's something that, again, goes back to the common sense. Any homeowner here knows that their home, after 20 years or so, you're going to have to replace the roof on your house. If someone tells you, you know what, it's 20 years, your roof is falling apart, you should know that. It's common sense. So in terms of road maintenance or park maintenance, it's mainly keeping up and making sure that we're budgeting for it appropriately and not having to go out and bond or do anything else. It's, again, the common sense approach to making sure that our quality of life is what it should be, and it is that, excuse me, and it is that what we're paying for. Thank you.
Mr. Cunningham.
Certainly, we should be budgeting for road repair on a regular basis, and I think that we're finally on track, where we're receiving grant funding from the state, and through the success of the council in the last 18 to 24 months, we actually did pass a bond to get the streets that are being done paved today. Four years ago, or three years ago, when it was like a 4-4 council, that would have never have happened. There was no collaboration with the members of the council until it became politically expedient. We needed to show that we could work together, and we have. So I hate to sound cynical about it, but we are finally doing what we need to be doing for the benefit of the residents, but it's only because of politics. We've tried to put bonding on the table to get these things done for a long time, so we're finally getting them done. As it relates to parks, I have a different approach with parks, particularly with the parks that we plan to add. I think that we should take on the same approach that New York City takes with the nature conserv -- well, a Parks Conservancy, and that we should put our parks into a nonprofit and run them through the nonprofit. The CD employees can be part of this nonprofit. We can provide funding to some extent, but then they can also raise money to help take care of our parks.
Ms. Giotino.
I'm very happy that roads are being repaved in Hoboken, in particular Bloomfield Street, which was repaved in its entirety. The issue with the parks, I do think there has been some improvement, but I think the city does need to do better on maintaining parks, and it's something that I will stay on top of, that issue, as a councilwoman. There are other -- there, sorry, repaving is going to be going on still. It was Package A, B, and C. A and B were done. C is still to be done, and this was paid for primarily through the city bonding. They bonded for a $2 million bond, and I think it was a $1.8 million bond. Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Murray, excuse me.
Thank you. Parks and our roads are a key focus for me on my platform. I don't believe that they've been well taken care of over the last few years. As far as our roads go, I think it's conveniently -- it's convenient that they're getting paved around election time. I'm happy that some of them are getting paved, but we still have a lot of work to do there. As far as the parks go, I look at Allegiant Park and even Church Square Park, and I think those are both city-owned parks in our town, and the maintenance and the upkeep just isn't there. And I've heard that, you know, due to some of the staffing cuts that we've had in town with our park maintenance crew, that some of that is probably an issue, but we pay a lot of high taxes here in Hoboken, and our families deserve to have parks that are being well-maintained. I look at Allegiant Park, and there's dirt patches everywhere, just much like Church Square. Leaves haven't been picked up since last fall. We should be upgrading some of these city parks with our tax dollars. Instead, we've had private donors upgrading those city parks. So I'm absolutely focused on making sure that So I'm absolutely focused on making sure that our parks are well-maintained and that we get our roads paved once and for all. Thank you.
Mr. Biancomano.
Thank you. I'm going to begin with the parks. I was actually very, very excited to hear when Allegiant Park was being, was going to be renovated. And so I witnessed how awfully maintained it was. There's tree limbs falling everywhere, unsanitary conditions at the sprinkler systems, wire rubber surfaces weren't added there like Stevens Park is beyond me, flooding issues at the basketball court. This is an area where our youngest residents in the Second Ward and other parts of the city go play and expand their minds. And for it to be neglected is a problem. I would be absolutely in favor of setting money on side from the budget to make sure that park is maintained. We have another small pocket park in the Second Ward called Legion Park. Half of that park is done. The other half of the park is not complete at all. The jungle gym phase is done, and in the back of the park where they were supposed to add a sprinkler system, it's not. And the money is there. In terms of the roads, I think we need to set a schedule, and we need to budget for, a schedule for how many years that we repave the road. And we need to make sure we budget for when the lifespan of that road comes up in the amount of years to repave. Thank you.
Mr. Garcia.
So I'm going to start with parks. Definitely is a lack of maintenance. And I refer to PMP, a preventative maintenance plan. That's what we need to have. Right now, you go to Church Square Park or Little League Field, you'll see broken lights, not working. You'll see a water fountain that, until I complained about it, was out for a year and a half at Church Square Park. So we need a proper preventative maintenance plan, and you need to have a hybrid solution, whereas you can outsource certain aspects, and then you have your personnel trained on how to do landscaping or specialize on how to maintain the parks. That's a big problem. When I speak to the neighbors, as I'm walking door to door, they tell me, you know what? It's a shame. I mean, Church Square Park, you made certain investments. We should have had a splash and spray water park there for the kids. You know, folks wanted to see sort of those dolphins already replaced. And the grass right now, it's horrendous. So those are issues that continue to happen in the bathrooms, where the restrooms are unkept, you know, at Sinatra Park, Church Square Park. With respect to the roads, same thing, you know, preventative maintenance plan. We know that what our infrastructure takes in, we understand how much traffic we get. We need to be ready, and we need to have in $108 million budget and $141 million in bonds, we should be always prepared in our budget to cover our maintenance of roads and parks. It's a problem with the potholes. Right after the actual paving, you saw cracking because they did it incorrectly. It was poor planning. There was no supervision. That's an issue. It's not fair to the residents. Now you have to call for no parking again so they could come back, fix the problem. You've got the curbs already cracking, and that's a big problem.
All right. I've been asked to remind the audience, we're not using questions that seem directed to a particular person, like, why is the current incumbent of such-and-such ward such an idiot? Those kinds of questions, or, you know, why is the challenger such an idiot? We're not, you know, so when you phrase a question, try to keep in mind that they should feel unbiased, and that will make us more likely to use them. Redoing my order right here. We see Mr. Gonzalez will be next again. And I am now going to read from my phone. This is NJ.com, titled, "Officials Urge Storm Prep Ahead of Hurricane Joaquin." First paragraph, "The state, New Jersey State Office of Emergency Management, is monitoring the track of Hurricane Joaquin, recommending vigilance as the storm approaches the northeastern U.S. The National Hurricane Center predicts New Jersey could fall right in the projected track for Joaquin, which stretches from Rhode Island to North Carolina." If you looked at the, you know, probability of all the computer models, it shows New Jersey, kind of southern Jersey, actually, right in the middle of the probability, but certainly we're in it. And with that, as a prologue, we have this question, two questions. "What are your plans to help reduce flooding problems in town?" And we also have this question. "The rebuild-by-design project will spend $230 million on Phase 1 of the Resist Delay Store Discharge Comprehensive Plan. Given the fact that funding for future phases could be limited, what components of this Phase 1 should be given the highest priority when addressing the twin threats of serious rainfall events experienced with Irene and the surge that occurred during Sandy? Please explain your rationale." So I would add Joaquin to that. But generally, you guys know the drill. The question is flooding. Mr. Gonzalez is first.
Sure. Well, in terms of flooding, kind of like the question said, there are two events. Protecting from a storm surge, such as Superstorm Sandy, and then protecting from rainfall. The easiest thing would be to not disincentivize homeowners from putting green roofs on their homes. Right now, if someone were to put a green roof on their home, they're going to get reassessed to higher value, and they're going to have to pay more in property taxes. So that in and of itself is a disincentive. In terms of flooding, as was mentioned before with parking, it's a problem that we always knew existed. The numbers were always there. There was never the political will to fix the problem. So when it comes to flooding, we have one pump. We should have, the second one is starting now, but we should have a third and a fourth pump. My opponent voted for, I think it was Mnet sensors, to tell us that it was flooding. We always knew it was flooding. The spare capacity for the North Hudson Sewage Authority is about 8 million gallons a day. If you get one inch of rain, that equates to 22 million gallons. So just with one inch of rain, you're already going to flood. So the numbers were always there. So in terms of flooding, what would I do? I would definitely promote green roofs, promote stormwater detention, and not disincentivize homeowners from, again, putting green roofs on their homes.
Mr. Biancomano on flooding.
Yeah. I agree 100% with Mr. Gonzalez that we do need more flood pumps. I don't believe one's enough. I don't believe two's enough. I do think we need three or four. They're actually building a flood pump right here down a block where the residents of Maxwell Place are a little upset with it. And I believe that it was because of lack of communication. I do think that the city almost shoved it down their throats without fully explaining what type of impact to the quality of life that pump was going to have. But I do believe that we do need more pumps, either a block north from there, or unfortunately, this is being built right now. And in terms of the rebuild-by-design, it's still in its early stages. I'm still not sure about if these walls are going to help. I'm not sure how much construction. I was at the meeting last week, and I had a question about how the storm surge from the flooded areas was going to go out into the Hudson River and where these pipes were going to go, how much construction we were going to have. So I think we need to start asking many questions about that. Thank you.
Mr. Cunningham.
Yes, I, with all due respect, disagree with my opponent. I would say that the Mnet was, I think, a good way to go to evaluate the system. It was not actually going to solve the flooding problem. And prior to Superstorm Sandy, the flood pump downtown was doing a sufficient job. It wasn't perfect. There's been a lot more development that has come online since then. And certainly after Superstorm Sandy and the Swiss cheese-type sewer system that we have, I mean, there's just no way water can flow from in around ShopRite and the northwest part of town down to the south end of town. It just can't, it just can't get there. So, you know, we're doing the pump. We are doing the pump. We may need a third pump. I think that's to be evaluated as we develop out the northwest part of Hoboken. Certainly with new construction, we're ensuring that there's flood mitigation that the developers have to install with their projects. And at the residential level, we've got rain barrels, and we're supportive of green roofs. Certainly, that can help with permeable surfaces to help absorb and hold and retain water until such time it can be treated and released back into the system. So I think we're doing all the right things. BASF is going to have a million gallons underneath it to retain water, and I think we're well on our way. Of course, it can't happen fast enough.
Ms. Giattino.
It definitely can happen fast enough if there could be a hurricane this weekend. The Southwest Park that's being built will have water retention. BASF will have water retention. City Hall is being renovated, and all the rainwater from that will not go back into the sewage. It'll be reused throughout City Hall. Green roofs are being encouraged. Rain barrels are being encouraged. A second flood pump is underway. And rebuild-by-design, if you wanted to know which one I think is the most important, I think it's really all of them working together. I don't think you could just plug one out and say, do that, and it would be a fix. Thank you.
Ms. Murray.
So I live at the Maxwell community, and I did want to clarify a point that my opponent mentioned, which was that the Maxwell community was upset about the pump going in their backyard. I just want to clarify that we do have the water pump. It's under construction right now. And we were not upset about the water pump going in our backyard. We were just very concerned about the health risks that were associated with the construction and breaking ground with contaminated soil. We all want to correct this flooding problem that's in the city. I think some of the efforts that the city has made already with all of the parks that they're proposing, putting storage pumps in, is great. I attended the meeting last week with the city and Dewberry Group, and I was fascinated by a lot of the concepts. I'm supportive of the green roofs, all the water pumps in town, because we do, we have to, we have to fix this flooding problem for, it's been, it's been going on for way too long. Thank you.
Mr. Garcia.
So I believe it's a comprehensive solution, whereas we all lived through Hurricane Irene and Superstorm Sandy. And if we had a combination of both, unfortunately, that'd be very dangerous to the city of Hoboken on both fronts. Definitely, green roofs is a must. We have to continue to promote and encourage with incentives to homeowners. The flood mitigation, you know, must be, it's critical to the success of Hoboken preventing the flooding. I mean, the reality is that you have new technologies and best practices with such as porous concrete. You know, you need to determine whether the retention or detention basins are the most appropriate in those areas, and of course, to eject the pump. So, again, it goes back to planning and the interconnectivity of them all from a comprehensive standpoint, which has been lacking, and that's what will be the best solution in my mind. And in speaking to engineers, even professors at Stevens, I mean, clearly, they've said it over and over, we need to focus on a comprehensive approach. It's not just one solution. It's a multifaceted solution. But if we do all those the right way, I'm pretty certain that, you know, we will give Hoboken residents relief. Thank you.
All right. My next refresh is there. Ms. Murray will be first. This is just sort of a moderator privilege question. I'm curious as to the thing, and some have been mentioned already, but what issue does your opponent most have wrong? And this is not designed to foster personal disputes, like my opponent is, you know, hates children, or beats up little animals, or my opponent is ugly, or things. But a policy, public policy issue that is high-minded, and we could discuss, that you might disagree with. I'm interested in what you honestly think your opponent has wrong. Ms. Murray.
That's a tough question. You know, I think both of my opponents, both Peter and Tiffany Fisher, we all seem to have fairly consistent platforms and the opportunities that we see for our Second Ward. I will say that, you know, when it comes to the Monarch Project, which I'm adamantly opposed to, I know that Tiffany is as well. But for my purposes, I'm opposed to it because I believe that Iron State should have developed a park there. They promised a park and tennis courts. They should keep a promise. And I know Tiffany is a resident of the Hudson T Building and probably stands to lose some financial equity in her properties. So I would say that, you know, on the Monarch Project, we might be looking at it for different reasons. Thank you.
Mr. Cunningham, is there something that Mr. Gonzalez has wrong?
Yes. He's, we've got this issue, which he was very vocal about at the last council meeting, last two council meetings. And I thank you for the opportunity to highlight that this evening. And that's how we go about acquiring open space. Mr. Gonzalez, this is a distinct difference between the two of us because we do agree on a lot of things. He believes that we should be working with BASF to give up two acres of the six-acre parcel to them for development in exchange for the park, for a free park, so that we're not burdening the taxpayers. That is wrong on two fronts. First of all, we've been pursuing this for a long time, for us to take control of the space, of the parcels, not to try and go back to what we tried to do 10 years ago with prior administrations and some of the council people here today to try and, like, negotiate with the developers where they're going to promise a park and a pool and a community center and garages and get nothing. All right? Have we not learned our lesson? Let's go ahead. Let's acquire it ourselves. If BASF wants to talk about a parking garage on one acre, that's fine. All right? And furthermore, there's a lot that's already being developed in the northwest part of town. We've got plenty of residential, and we're trying to diversify away from the residential, from more commercial, to bring the taxes down and to reduce the traffic and transportation issues we currently have. We cannot deal and work with the developers in that fashion.
Mr. Garcia, what does Ms. Giattino have wrong?
So there's a multitude of issues with respect to my opponent. The reality is, there's a lack of responsiveness and representation. You know, it's not fair, whereas my 90-year-old veteran neighbor has to wait three months to get a response or for me to get involved and ensure that his handicap parking spot gets painted. Another neighbor today, Jerry, it's not fair that they put no parking signs on four blocks radius, no action taken, no work done, and where are you going to put the displaced 300 cars? That's absurd. So there's a lack of responsiveness, you know, and that's the difference between my opponent and I, that I will be the get-it-done, around-the-clock councilperson, where you don't have to be told on the phone, well, guess what? Show up to the city council meeting and complain. That's nonsense. I work for the people. I serve them. They elect me to do the job, and I will represent them in the way that they can, you know, text me, they could Facebook me, tweet me, they could Snapchat me, take a picture, let me know what the problem is. I'll get it fixed. And that's the difference between myself and my opponent.
Mr. Biancomano, what does Ms. Murray have wrong?
Well, it was, it's funny you ask that question because earlier today, we had the Hudson Reporter debates, and we called our word the gentle person's debate because there was really no rebuttals. Because as Ms. Murray said, we're really agreeing more than disagreeing. And Ms. Fisher's not here to defend herself, so I will not bring up her name. But I do want to talk about the Monarch Project. Growing up in the neighborhood, open space was lacking. My friends and I were consistently looking for open space. I do believe there should have been open space at that site. And I still believe there should be open space at that site. Where I think the issue is, is the city dropped the ball on a public planning board meeting that they did not schedule, causing the judge to rule in favor of the developer to build on that site. So now what have we? We have a condo association dilemma with the developer, and the residents of the Second Ward and the residents of our city of Hoboken are paying for, are basically paying for this litigation. So we need to continue to push for open space at that site. I do believe it was going to add parking. We just added a residential building at 15th and Park Avenue, eliminating an 11-story parking garage. So parking is desperately needed in the Second Ward, and I do think that we need to keep communicating on that. Thank you.
Ms. Giattino, I suspect you have some disagreements with Mr. Garcia.
I disagree that I'm never around. I think that is probably one of my greatest qualities, that I am always there for people when they need me. I help numerous people, and when people call, I return their phone call. When they email, I return their email. I think it's interesting that Assemblyman Garcia would bring that up when I haven't seen him around the Sixth Ward until the last six months, when he decided to run, and suddenly everyone in the Sixth Ward is getting birthday cards. Thank you. And also proclamations, when there was no, there was no sign of him over the past, I don't know how long. Thank you.
And Mr. Gonzalez, your turn.
Thank you. As Mr. Cunningham said, we do disagree on the approach to the BASF site. I do not want to burden the Hoboken taxpayers for at minimum an additional $45 million. Back in, I think it was 2010, the city already then had authority to eminent domain and authority to bond for this site, but nothing happened. Now, fast forward, and you're doing the same thing over again. If you would have done it back then, it would have been a lot cheaper than now, as the market has kept going up. The other one is, he mentioned taking control. If you look at taking control in the developer deals, if you look at some of the other deals that have been done, they seem to have a preferred developer. And when you look at the Monroe Arts Center, the project that's going on back there, it was a similar deal. It was giving the developer a variance and then getting the parks at no cost. I don't understand why you would want to burden, again, the taxpayers for $45 million when you can get it for zero, and it's probably not going to be $45 million.